Covered at our offsite. And we thought that there, you know, that's probably a logical place to still cover them. The business plan, again, my, our thinking, and I talked to Ruth about it, was that that, of course, is a long-term plan. So when we set goals on there, we're typically thinking, you know, seven years, 10 years into the future, or whatever. So that plan, and I'm saying this to get your response, but that plan wouldn't really typically change because we're having a pandemic year. But the actions that the administration might take on any given year would change. So we thought maybe we could talk about that. Does that seem reasonable? Okay. And then the, yeah, the afternoon, I know, you know, we're in, I was trying to think of the right term for it. We're certainly having financial challenges. You know, I don't want to say we're in a hole. I mean, we're probably doing better than a lot of cities, but we certainly had to curtail a lot of spending. And we're in kind of an unsustainable budget situation. We should be clawing at a lot of, but we thought we'd go into detail on that. And the administration, I know, would like to prepare data for us and talk about if there's any choices to be made, talk about those choices. So that would be sort of the afternoon of the retreat. One of the considerations is the administrative staff are going to have their own retreat, and they will help prepare information for ours, theirs. And I found out rather, I think just this week, that the first date they could come up with, I think, is in early March. So that'll put ours a little later, I think, than we would typically have. But maybe, Julia, you could remind us of what the scheduling issues are there?
So the mayor's staff retreat is going to be March 3rd and 4th. And if you guys are talking about a Saturday, the retreat, I think, is on a Tuesday and Wednesday. And so the first Saturday following that might be a little too soon. So either the 13th or the 20th might work.
Okay. Yeah, so in fairness to the staff, so they'll go through a lot of data and come up with what they want to present, but it's probably not fair to ask them to just take a day and a half to process that. So, yeah, so the 13th or the 20th would give staff enough time. Does, are there any feelings about, I mean, I'd probably rather go with the 13th if people know that that's okay. Does it seem like an okay date for everyone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Ruth, I see your hand up. Forgive me.
Thank you. Mr. President, so my thought was that last year, we have a very, very productive retreat, and we have a lot of things that we lined up. And, but right the day after the retreat was when we announced that we were going to be quarantined. And indeed, the mayor didn't have the opportunity to have his own retreat with his own staff after that retreat to review what were going to be the priorities that the council set up for. Of course, those priorities are still a priority because those were the priorities that we discussed last year. However, the priorities shift a little bit because of the, now the COVID-19 situation. So my thinking was that, thinking, considering that we are, they're going to have their retreat previous to our retreat, having the retreat two weeks, I don't have any interest with that. But it will be important to, for us to know if during the time that we're going to be discussing the future, addressing the future challenges for the city, not just financially, but also to accomplish some of the goals that we have established. If they will give us a brief update, or we are going to wait for those to be during the year, that would be a question.
Okay. I understand. Are you, are you asking a question or suggesting, Ms. Perez?
It's more like a question because I am concerned about the time consuming during some meetings. However, to be able to address the challenges that we're going to have financially, we also need to know what are the priorities for that year to be addressed.
Okay.
And I don't know if I'm making any sense.
I think so. I think, I'll paraphrase, and you'll see if I understand. But, and I think, I think when I talked to you before, before I was sort of coming up with a suggestion, I'd gotten your input on this. But, yeah, the, we know the administration, our staff, are coping with a lot of unplanned issues. And obviously, they're coping with the, just the difficulties of, you know, having to meet virtually and everything. And so I did ask that in both the morning and afternoon sessions, that staff be prepared to explain how they're going to, or, you know, how they're going to hit the items that we have made commitments to the public about. We have racial equity and justice that we want to attend to and prioritize. We have, we have an interim shelter ordinance, and we've promised the public that we're going to have a final, things like that, that kind of have to be done. But then we have, the staff had committed, like at the last council retreat, to a lot of other items that are working, different, different studies and sort of rough schedules. And I think, to your point, Councilmember Perez, we should hear from the staff how they tend to, or how they're expecting to juggle all those different responsibilities, and make sure that we feel that they're, they're hitting the ones that are important to us and the community. And, you know, if there are ones that they're delaying, that those are the right ones, right? Is that kind of what you're talking about, or?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. And I really want, you know, I want the whole council to be driving this, certainly not just me. But that's kind of, typically, at this council retreat, we go over that. And so I still want that to be an element of it. And, although, that's kind of a good segue. Now, let's see, did I see, oh, I've seen two other, three hands up, yep. Councilmember Prince?
Can I make one more suggestion?
Please.
Since we are, because of Zoom, we're having a condensed retreat. I know that in past years, we've always talked about following up and doing a second mini-retreat in the fall. I think if there's any year where that's most appropriate, it's probably this year. So I think we should have in the back of our minds, you know, having our retreat in March, and then doing a follow-up in sometime in September or October, so that we can, A, look at where things stand, and B, look at the things that we had committed to at the retreat in March.
Thank you for that suggestion. And yes, I'll be watchful of, if there's an opportunity. In fact, I think maybe, well, you know, at some point during the year, we'll see if we ever feel like, you know, and based on what, you know, the governor says and what the health experts say, you know, perhaps during this year even, we'll reach a point where we can come back to having meetings together again. And then that would be a real indication that we could move forward on the retreat you're mentioning. We could even get to a point where we're not ready to have full council meetings, but we might decide we want to try and pull off some sort of in-person, you know, one-off meeting. And I'm open to that. So let's stay in touch on that point. That's a really good point, and I agree, that would be good. Councilmember Benedetti, I think your hand was up next, and then I see Councilmember Halloran.
Thank you, Council President Corman. So I was, I'm going to echo that I think it's a good idea to have a second, or definitely plan for a second retreat in the fall. I do agree with what it is that you said, that there are some things that are priorities that we absolutely need to act on, and I think that, and within the first half of the year, necessarily by how it is that they've timed. I think that we would definitely want to set aside some time in the retreat for those beyond just the budget and the business plan. And I also think it would be helpful, at least to me, to know what were the outcomes from the mayor's staff retreat before we go into ours, so that we know if there are things that they're expecting council direction from, and we can be prepared for those conversations. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. It's good inputs. And follow, I just want to make sure I understand your suggestion. Do you think maybe, like those two items that I mentioned, which are both commitments sort of to the community, are you suggesting that we should maybe allow some time at the council retreat to discuss those two items?
Well, if not in the council retreat, certainly over multiple committees of the whole or some other public forum. I mean, those are absolutely, those are commitments that this council made, and that I think we owe our community.
Yes, okay, thank you. And I agree fully. And let me clarify, for anybody that's maybe just listening in, yeah, the proposal would be that we would have committed the whole meetings to go over topics that we might have normally taken up at a, at a, let's say, if we'd had a two-day in-person council retreat. But very much, those items deserve committee of the whole meetings. Actually, both of them I mentioned deserve those meetings in the near term. And I think, I think we're, I've talked to, I've been talking to the mayor's office about that. And they're, they're getting, getting close to presenting, talking to us about the shelter ordinance, you know, moving to a final version. The, oh, another topic that's, that's important also is, and we should be getting to it soon, is discussion about the 10th, I mean, and this is kind of related to the shelter ordinance, but the 10th of a percent sales tax and the new revenues that we're receiving. And council has an opportunity to help decide, I mean, we get to decide how that money's going to be spent. But that's, that's important topic for committee of the whole, too. I didn't even mention that, and that one will be coming up soon. But, yes, I, in fact, having said that, that was part of what I'd hoped to do in this meeting, was, was maybe agree on some, some near-term committee of the whole topics. So I've been making Councilmember Halloran wait longer than I intended to. So I'll go to you, Councilmember Halloran, and then circle back.
Thank you. So if we're, if we have a certain amount of time to do the business plan, and a certain amount of time to talk about budget and financials, would it make sense, I mean, if we're going to have, if we're going to try to hit every bullet on the business plan, would it make sense to just say, you know, we've got 15 minutes for each of these, bring your best game, so that we actually do talk to each one? Or are we just going to let, are we just going to say, well, what's important to you? And maybe we don't really get through the whole thing? So that was one question. And the other, the other thought that I have is that this is a comprehensive plan year, and it would be great to get maybe a committee of the whole on what CED is planning around that. So that's just my other thought. Thank you.
Those are great ideas, yeah. So I think that's an excellent suggestion, Councilmember Halloran, to maybe just make sure we check in on every item, rather than go to some presentation. We should just look at the business plan and walk our way through. I think that's a, be an excellent way to conduct that meeting. And I could, I could let the staff know that that's how we expect to walk through it, so they can maybe be prepared to tell us, you know, where they are with each item. But it's important to me, whenever I have a meeting with, with staff, since the council can only, we can only talk to each other in these meetings, that's be important to leave time for us to talk. So I'll, I'll stress that. But I think that's a great suggestion of a way to address it, so that we don't miss any items. Because every item on that business plan, we all know, is very important for us. Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Council President. I guess, just going back to the timeframe, are we looking at how many hours between, like, we're just looking at the Saturday? Or are we also perhaps, I'm not sure if you want two-day retreat on Zoom, but if there's a lot of pressing matters, which there are, we could do a Saturday and Sunday as well, rather than waiting six months or whenever it is for the next week timeframe.
Yeah.
And so for the Saturday, Council President, are you thinking of roughly four hours, five hours, and then with breaks and so forth?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking exactly that. I was thinking four or five hours, like a two-to-three-hour morning session and a two-to-three-hour afternoon session. But you make a very good point about the urgency of some of these items. And I can't stress enough that I would like to, to use sort of the committee of the whole time, and have longer, more meaningful, perhaps, committee of the whole meetings than we've had in past years. So to think of it as, you know, that we're doing like, like your suggestion, we're having the council retreat over a period of meetings. And so, so I'm anticipating that rather than, you know, often, committee of the whole meetings are, you know, a staff report on some item and us, you know, responding. And I think we ought to have some pretty, instead, this year, since we're going to, we're going to miss some of our normal face-to-face retreat, I think the committee of the whole meetings should, should be more involved. And, I mean, the upside of that is then we don't have to wait till middle of March either. So we have, we have meeting, meetings available between now and then for committee of the whole. So before, before we're done here tonight, maybe we should agree on some topics that we want to get to even before the council retreat. Because I want to do what you suggest, Councilmember Van, and not, you know, not, not just say, oh, well, we don't have enough time, so we're not going to talk these. It would just be that, well, we'll spread it out a little bit more.
But I, yeah, but I guess, I guess my question is, would anyone on council here entertain the idea of having also Sunday? I mean, because there's so many other items that we need to talk about, right? So.
If we were going to do that, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if we were going to do that, I'd vote for a Friday/Saturday versus a Saturday/Sunday. I don't think it's, I mean, I think we all also have family obligations, and saying that we're going to take our whole weekend would be a little, little more, a little rough. So I'd do, if we were going to do two-day, I'd go Friday/Saturday versus Saturday/Sunday.
Okay, so, all right, see, Sarah, well, I'll, I'll take you in order. I think that Councilmember Perez is next.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Councilmember, thank you, personal, Council President Corman. I'm going to change the topic a little bit. I was going to make a suggestion that in the past, each council member, we have sent several topics of conversations that we think are important to address on an email to Julia, or to you directly, with topics from dog parks to house affordability. You know, there are many topics that, because we have heard the community that they are concerned about it, or because we have questions about these different topics. So if you think convenient, like in past years, we can do the same. We can send a list of the topics that we think that are important, and then, in the past as well, all these topics that we have not been able to address during our retreat, we address them during the year on council meetings, and you, as president, choose which ones and which days and in which order. So that way, if other council members have the same priorities that I think are priorities, you will know what are more important than others to bring back to the council. That's just a suggestion of something that we have done in the past.
It's an excellent suggestion, and I think we should do that. In fact, maybe rather than me ask, you know, put people on the spot to think of the items tonight, I think that's a great suggestion to, perhaps if every council member could, could come up with maybe their top five items that they would like to see us, you know, bring forward on committee of the whole, for starters. I mean, obviously, we can discuss more than that during the course of a year, but if we could get started, maybe with every council member's, you know, three to five top issues. Maybe everybody try and come up with five and get them to Julia. A lot of them will obviously be redundant to one another, but actually, that might be data, too. That'll maybe give us an idea of the priority. That's a, that's a great suggestion, just, just as if, like we've done in past years for the council retreat. But that'll, we'll, we'll get off and running with committee of the whole discussions. Julia, does that seem reasonable?
Yes, that seems reasonable. And I wanted to just give you a heads up that it's a mid-biennium year for budget, and Carrie says that typically, council would start discussing the budget in mid-October, but she also might think you guys might want to move that to September. So when you're planning for a fall retreat, you need to keep that in mind as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Benedetti, I think, was next.
Thank you, Council President. Well, and this might be something that we pick up again in the biennium discussion in September. I was wondering when we would be potentially able to discuss the human services budget, if that's something that we would talk about in the budget half of the council retreat, or if you would prefer it be committee of the whole.
Good question, yeah. You know, that's, to me, it strikes me that that's probably, right, it makes sense that it would come up in the budget discussion, or maybe we'd have the budget discussion at the retreat first. But, that's a good question. I, I think I heard several council members, and perhaps all council members, were interested in trying to expand that human service budget. So it should, yeah, I'll tell you this, and this isn't the final word on it, I mean, but, but I will remind the administration that in our budget section, that that's a priority that we've heard expressed. So, you know, when, when we're talking about our budget situation, we should be talking in terms of how can we expand that. And then, in addition, you know, we could talk about putting it on the committee of the whole. And thank you for reminding me about that. Councilmember Halloran?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to reiterate, I really like the idea of dedicated committee of the wholes for some of these topics, so that we really can just be focused and not be watching the clock, and not have other things that we need to get through, whether it's the full hour, or if it's an hour and a half, that really have some in-depth conversations about these, and not be focused on, you know, the time and all these other things that we need to get through. And then I'd also like to ask a question about format. Because we're in Zoom, will we be doing sort of a go-around-the-table, and everybody gets the chance to speak once, and then, you know, just consciously calling on each of us to raise our voice? Or is it firsthand-up, or how does that work?
I mean, if it were my call, I'd like to see it more informal. And, you know, I think what you're getting at is the retreat, sometimes when we're having our best discussions, we sort of dispense with Robert's rules and just sort of have a chat, you know? And I, I think to the degree that we're able to do that, I would love to see us do it that way. It is, as we know, I mean, Zoom makes it that much harder, especially if some people's internet connection's a little bit slower or something. But, you know, that, I think that was kind of, I always thought that was kind of the, one of the points of doing the retreat, was to, to make the conversations a little more free-flowing and relaxed, and not just, because of the Robert's rules and, and everybody started being limited, that conversation, well, just a little bit like what's happened here. I mean, Councilmember Van raised a point about Saturday and Sunday retreat, or having two-day retreats. We haven't really been able to discuss that, because I'm trying to keep to the, you know, the order. But can I, can I ask, I mean, Councilmember Halloran, are you maybe suggesting that it be kind of informal if we can pull that off? Is that the suggestion?
Absolutely. I mean, this is really our one time to really talk with each other. But, yeah, I just, I was just curious if anybody had given some thought to, you know, just, just making sure that every voice at the table has an opportunity.
Yeah, good, good. And on that score, I should get to Councilmember McGurven, who's had his hand up for a while.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. It hasn't been that long. I think I raised it, and then what I was going to say got said by someone else, and so I lowered it, and then I was like, well, I should probably chime in on this anyhow, so here I go. I was actually going to address the issue of the two-day thing and how we kind of plan this out. I was certainly in the camp of, let's do it in the committee of the whole, because I thought that would be more productive. However, that said, I can see value in doing it today if there's enough folks to commit to that. What I think we need to do is back up and say, okay, what all do we want to get to? And work backwards from there. So let's make our list. And then, I don't want to, like, force anything into any box, but if we have a better opportunity, and here's what may be different about this year's retreat, obviously, the retreat is open to the public. Typically, not a lot of people from the public have attended our retreat, and it could be by the day, or having to go there, whatnot. That may be different this year. We may have more public involvement being online via Zoom. And so knowing that that's going to be the case, I think that's something certainly to think about, too, in terms of how we approach it, to make sure that we can get the most value out of it, as far as some of these things being really big issues. I think we'll have ongoing community conversations around that. So I think there may be an opportunity for, we may have to follow up with some of the things on the retreat, too. And so that, I don't want to say all those committee of the wholes are spoken for already, when we may have to bring something back. Obviously, I have to give staff enough lead time to bring stuff back. And I know that's typically what happens coming out of the retreat. So I guess what I'm going around about saying is, I am less opposed to the two-day thing if that's what makes sense based off the workload, and I would be open to that. Now, that said, I will probably say I'm firmly in favor of the Friday/Saturday option, and that's not for me personally. I don't mind giving it my weekends, but I also recognize it takes a lot of staff to run these things, and so it's not just us, too. And I know they would never say that, and they're like, oh, yeah, we can do weekends. But at the same time, like, I want to be mindful of everyone else's families, too. So Friday/Saturday would be my vote if we do the two-day format.
Okay, good. And Councilmember Van?
Yeah, Councilmember McGurven said something I wanted to say earlier, but then, just on the whole two-day, I'm not forcing on a Sunday. I know we all have family. I have family and elders and all these people I need to get vaccinated. So it's, but I understand there's an important business that we need to take care of, and it's long overdue, right? So I think that we can still be focused during council retreat, but we can also bring issues into committee of the whole. And so I'm okay with Friday and Saturday, however we do it, yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I, and I want to say, I agree, too. I think, you know, I think if two days made sense, you know, Friday/Saturday would be a good choice. And if it's okay with council, I may just take that under advisement, working with the staff, and Julia and Judith, and looking at the topics we have, and when we can work them into committee of the whole, and maybe come back with a recommendation about one day versus two days. I should say, one of the considerations when I first proposed one day was along the lines of what Councilmember Prince suggested. My first view on this was that we would have two different sessions. One, there was, you know, a one-day, or the Saturday one in the, in this early part of the year, and then we'd have another one in person later on. And then I started becoming concerned that maybe with the one in person wasn't necessarily a guarantee because of, you know, just the news about how slowly the vaccine rollout's going and so forth. But, but that was kind of the intent, not that we, not that we'd lose, you know, FaceTime, but that we'd sort of split it into a virtual and then a physical meeting later. But if it's okay, I think maybe I'll, I'll take a look at the items that everybody submits to Julia, and then work with, work with Judith and Julia and the mayor's office to see what the timing looks like, and then make another proposal. Does that seem to see what the timing looks like and then make another proposal. Does that seem reasonable? With an understanding, okay, that, that Friday, if we do add a second day of retreat, that Friday would be the day. And then it sounded like that, that weekend, the, the March 13 is the Saturday. So if we did add Friday, it wouldn't be all day Friday. Just about every other council president in the region said, don't have a all day Zoom meeting. So, so it would be potentially the 12th to take over if we need a couple of days. Okay, that seem reasonable? Okay, so, so that's an action item then for everybody is to get some, a list of items to Julia that you'd like to see us delve into. If everybody tries to maybe start with five, I mean, I'm not gonna stop anybody from submitting more than that, but we'll probably get a pretty good list from that. And then I think we have Doug Levy with us. I was gonna have him to sort of fill us in on, on where we are with our legislative meetings as a council. Oh, Ms. Perez?
Yeah, I think Mr. Prince has, he has, and I will like to speak up differently.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Prince. Yeah, it's, it's funny, it's a yellow icon on your yellow background, so I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's okay. You can focus. I, I think you, you made my point. I was gonna say, I think we're putting the cart before the horse as far as one day versus two day. I think we look at what we come up with as far as priorities, and then we make the call as opposed to trying to make that call now. So I think you, you made my point. I just forgot the word my head.
Okay, thanks. Okay, and, yeah, yeah, Doug, did you want to tell us maybe where we are with our planning for the legislative meetings?
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Ms. Perez.
No, it's okay. I, I was just waiting for everybody to speak before I have to, the opportunity to double deep in this conversation. So in reference of the suggestion of Councilmember O'Halloran, I, I do agree that we, we should have a more casual conversation. However, the rules exist for a reason. And I think that without following the rubber rules, just we need to be very mindful of, of the discipline and respectful conversation that that we should have during the retreat. And especially as Councilmember O'Halloran mentioned a couple of times, give the opportunity to everybody to, to, to speak. And, and, and that will be my take on that. But the second one will be, what are our priorities? And definitely, for me, one of the, the most challenging priorities that all of us, we would have is the financial stability of the, of the city. Coming out of that recession and knowing perfectly all of us that we, we were planning to have to do some repair on, on, on some of the impact that we have had. It, the challenge will be how to do this without putting burden of our constituents that already have been severely economically impacted by the COVID. So I think if we're talking about two, two different retreats, two, two different days, my biggest concern will be that maybe two hours and a half will be not enough to come with, with, with actions, items that we will have to address this, this major issue. However, I agree with Councilmember Prince. I mean, it will depend of, of, of the agenda and how we fast we move on addressing some of these issues.
Okay, very good. Yeah, thank you for that wisdom. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, Doug, we'll give, I'll go to you and ask you again, if you don't mind, just sort of filling us in.
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. President and council members. So I think Council President Corman asked me to just check in with you on the question of how the council might effectively weigh in with some of our legislators in this most unprecedented legislative session we've ever seen. They're nearly all virtual legislative session. So, so I had put together some information for Council President Corman. And then I just wanted to convey that, yes, go ahead. Mr. President, were you gonna chime in?
Only that you had frozen for a second, but you're back.
Okay, okay. And so what we tried to put together for you all is maybe to zero in on six members of our legislative delegation and really also focus in on funding requests that the city has across the capital and transportation budgets, partly because those are very significant requests in our legislative agenda and partly because with the schedule and the cutoffs for individual bills, we would have a very difficult time getting in front of the legislators in a timely fashion. There are certainly going to be other issues that are going to come up where we may want to tap all of you on the collective shoulder that we have on our agenda around racial justice and equity and around affordable housing and fiscal items and the like. But that was one thought as a way to have you be in front of several of our members. The, the six that we've suggested are Senators Hasagawa, Saldana, and Wellman, and Representatives Hackney, Santos, and Berquist, all of whom have a hand in either transportation or capital items or both. And then we've made a suggestion around a couple of council members at each of these and a third council member able to go if he, she desires. And we can get you that list, which is flexible, obviously, if you all have different thoughts. What we tried to do is match those legislators up with some relationships we, we knew that you all have right now. But so that's, I think, Mr. President, what you wanted me to cover. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Well, that's good. It's great. Really well done, Doug. Thank you. I know it's been a challenging year. I would just add to it that I know in a, in a typical year, in this, this, this part will sort of be the same. We don't really know as legislation works through, when the different committee meetings might be that are important. And Doug, we'll just ask that you, like, like, like you always would, might contact council members and find out if they would like to testify or, you know, have another ad hoc meeting. And we'll just ask, you lead us like you always do. And I would also add that any council member that would like to testify on a particular topic, please, please let Doug know. I mean, we can't always get those opportunities to do that testimony. But, but if, if you really want to testify, the, the best way to, to make that happen is to let Doug know, and we can try and work that in. So, and I saw, okay, I saw a hand go up, but it's not up anymore. So, so, and can, when council members see that memo, they could just respond back to you, right, Doug?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, and do know as well that obviously we've, you know, with the mayor and, and Mr. Van Bailey and Preeti and myself, we've been holding a lot of meetings with legislators heading into the session and then obviously since then. And, and the mayor's been busy on that score as well.
I, I know that, you know, we, we would like opportunities for everybody to get to meet all the legislators and, and, you know. But, but I, I think because of the pandemic, you know, things are different right now. And I, all I can say is, Doug, I hope you'll also keep looking for those opportunities to make sure that the, the legislators that are representing parts of Renton, you know, ultimately get a chance to meet with all of us when, when the time is right. And, and maybe that, you know, maybe that's after things settle down. I don't know. But it's, it's been a kind of a trade off, but.
Happy to do that.
Good. Any kind of questions about that or? Good. All right. Well, that's kind of what I'd hope to cover. I, I want to really thank everybody. I feel like this was a good can of discussion. And I'll, like, it's, again, I just would emphasize, I want these, you know, I want to have a productive year. I want to be sure we're talking about the topics you want to discuss, leaving enough time to, to have those real discussions. So go ahead and send, send your items to Julia, and we'll make sure we get them all scheduled and have meaningful conversations. And don't be shy. If, if at any of the meetings you feel like a topic's not getting enough time, I'll reschedule it, bring it back. So I, I thank you all. Appreciate it. With that, I don't see any other hands, so I will adjourn the committee of the whole and we'll reconvene as a council in 15 minutes. Thanks.